So it's, um. All right. So we, it looks like we have everyone here. It's 5:00 PM. So I'm going to call this meeting of the San Diego Community Power Board Directors to order. It is June 24th. This is our regular meeting in June. It's 5:00 PM and let's do a roll call.
San Diego representative? Here, La Mesa representative?
Bill Baber for La Mesa here.
Imperial Beach representative?
Serge DeDina from Imperial Beach here.
Chula Vista representative?
Steve Padilla for Chula Vista present.
Encinitas representative?
Present, Joe Mosca.
We have a quorum?
Perfect. Well, welcome everyone to our meeting and we're still obviously doing virtual and I think we'll be discussing soon about when we'll actually go back to in person, but we're currently still virtual and all the rules that we've adopted previously for virtual meetings are still in effect. So let's, let's do a pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Republic for which.
What stands? One nation.
One nation.
Under.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible. Liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice.
Perfect. All right. So are there any changes to the posted agenda? Not hearing anyone. Let's move to public comment. And Kimberly, do we have any public comment? We don't have any public comments. All right, perfect. So we'll move to the consent calendar. We have two items in the consent calendar for consideration. Approval of cooperation and administration services agreement with the city of Sandy Encinitas for continued SDCP human resource services and treasury report. Do we have any questions or do we have a motion on this item?
I'll move the item.
All right, we have a motion by Director Baber for the consent calendar. Do we have a second?
Do you have a second?
We have a second on that, on that motion. Kimberly, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
All right, let's vote on this.
Board member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member DeDina, how do you vote?
Yeah, yes.
Board member Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Hi.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
Excellent. All right, let's move on to the regular agenda and item number three is our next up. And under number three, it's operation and administration report from the interim chief executive officer. So Bill, that's you.
All right, you can see we've diced, sliced and diced this. So folks are taking little pieces. I'm gonna just make you aware that in the agenda packet is some updated information on Western community energy. So you have that information in case you get questions about what, how we compare, et cetera. Also talking about the strategic planning effort, we've sort of rerouted our focus for the interim, but it looks like in September, you all are going to be available so that we can actually have our strategic planning committee meeting in September. I think, is it the 17th, Kimberly? Is that the date?
That's correct. The 17th from 12 to 5.
And then in between, the next couple of months, we're starting to focus on staff, team building and coordination and learning to work together for those couple of months. And then we will get sort of on the original track of having the strategic planning meeting and then we will continue after that to, to look at implementation and other issues in there. So we're really happy about that because it's, that's kind of an important endeavor. And so we, we want to make you aware of that and appreciate you all giving us some time that day to, to do the important job of taking a look at where we're headed. So with that, there's some interesting items, sort of the housekeeping that Cody is going to cover with regard to office, office space, that meeting, a break and that sort of thing. So Cody?
Thank you, Bill. And I see there's a hand up in the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know when you want to take that chair, Moscow, but just letting you know. And so the three items that I'm going to cover quickly are the office, offices and office space reopening and then a potential for summer break for us. So on office space, we're, we're looking both at interim space in the near term and we're going to be doing a tour tomorrow. Bill will be down and several staff will join me and we'll look at some temporary office space. And then also looking at doing a site tour for potential long-term office space that won't be ready for quite some time, but still something we're thinking about now. Things are reopening. I'm very much looking forward to being able to get together sometime. Occasionally the passing of meetings. And the next item is just general reopening that we recognize in our tracking that they are reopening and per the governor's executive order after September 30th, which obviously means starting in October, meetings will be going back to being more or less public. And I know you're all experiencing that as well in your own city council meetings. You could choose to do so earlier. And we'll be tracking that and presenting to you all our plans for how to manage that. We were meeting regularly for the board meetings in the city of San Diego Council Chambers, which was a discussion we had. Gosh, maybe a year ago to decide where to meet and, and you all have directed us to stay central. And so we still have that space reserved and return to that and we'll be looking at space for our committee meetings as well. And so just, just letting you know, we're tracking all that and, and we'll be reopening and setting in-person meetings as needed. And then the third one is the summer break, summer recess, going dark, whatever you'd like to call it, although I think going dark is probably the least preferable for our organization. So we're looking at either July or August, I believe. Bill is working with the chair on exactly which month. We're of course open to feedback and we'll look at all of your, all of your pities. I know you, you, you all vary on which of those two months you go dark. So happy to take that feedback. But we're going to propose that looking at our agendas as well. And we think it's, it's feasible and not only feasible, but reasonable for, for that, for our organization as well. Those are my three items. Next, I think unless there's any questions, Byron is up with staffing.
Questions for, for Bill or for Cody or any feedback?
No, just, I, I just negotiated a three-year office for my nonprofit in Del Mar that we got arguably the cheapest ever rates. You know, so now's the time to bargain hard. I know you know that, but anyway, it's a good time to look for offices.
Good to hear. And yeah, we're, we're seeing that. So thank you.
So are we gonna further discuss this at our planning session? Because, you know, in terms of just the, the kind of philosophical approach here? Because, you know, are we? Are we gonna, are we saying that everybody needs to come into the office? Are we saying that there's going to be a very robust telework kind of policy? And, and you know, also, are we looking for space that, that would be suitable for five, for the next five years? Or are we looking to kind of, you know, have something that's, that's very interim, interim, where we're basically able to kind of grow as we go along? Because, I mean, in the beginning, you know, from, from my perspective, it would be like, you know, something that has a public face to it. Something allows for, for, for the board to meet and then some space for, for staff. But, but hopefully we would have a telework policy where we don't have all the staff there at the same time. And so that we could kind of, we can grow, we can, we can have several different kind of iterations and we can kind of move as the organization is growing and changing.
Well.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, well, all of those are really policy issues that will come back to you. I'm guessing we're going to need to address it and want to address those before the, the strategic planning session was in, in the fall because we're looking at trying to move fairly quickly on finding some, some interim space. And we're thinking, again, subject to however you all want to slice and dice it, but we're thinking that we should maybe look at some existing interim space that has flexibility to do maybe a 12-month lease. That will allow us to really then take a look at what our operations are like. We still have some growing to do. So do we want to lock in spaces early and, or maybe find a facility that can grow with us? So we're not carrying or short to space. Of course, a, a big question with that is how are we gonna, how are we gonna staff the office? And we'll, we'll be checking and have been checking with what some of the other CCAs are planning to do. And quite frankly, at least from what I've seen, they're kind of all over the map. Some are not going back at all and some are going back five days a week, 40, you know, 40 hours a week. And, and there are those that are in the middle. And I think what we want to try to do is take a look at why they're doing what they're doing and then come back to you all with perhaps even some options along the lines of what you, you mentioned chair. And, but it will be a board decision. We may make a recommendation based on half, how we feel about it, what we found out about it. But we need to do that, I think, fairly quickly. I think our interim goal here is to be in some office space by September, no later than October, when we have to start going back to live meetings. We'll be all set up, ready to go. And so that will need to come back to you before, before this strategic planning meeting. And then in terms of long-term, we're just now just scratching the surface in terms of, of locations. You know, what, 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 we don't even know our needs yet, but there was an opportunity to tour some, some property for the, the building is, is to be built that meets us a lot of our criteria that's, would be about a year away. So we thought it was not too early to start getting some ideas, put a package together on all those subjects. Come back to you all and then we can discuss it and debate it and get everybody's input. And then hopefully, at least on an interim basis, get us started with some space that we can move into by fall for, for probably a year.
Okay. All right. Any other, any questions on or comments on that, those items? All right, I guess we can move on to, is Byron next?
Chair Moscow?
Yes.
There is a hand raised.
Oh, I didn't see it. I don't see a hand. Any of the board members can just shout out if they want.
It's Matt with CAC.
Oh, it's a, oh, all right, all right. I didn't have that on. A member of the public. Okay. Did you want to call on him?
Yeah. Matt, you're, you're available to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, directors. This is Matthew Vassalakis from Climate Action Campaign dialing in to encourage the board and the staff to closely look at the reasons why Western community energies failure occurred and who was involved. Obviously, SDCP is in a 100-degree, 180-degree position with strong financials, organization and leadership, making responsible decisions unlike the failed program. So while we don't have any concerns about SDCP's position, we do believe it is in the organization's best interest to do its own postmortem or jointly with CalCCA or with other CCE programs on WCE to keep its failures from reoccurring. Thank you.
Matt, good suggestion in terms of trying to understand what happened and make sure that, that we're, there, there are learning lessons for all of us. All right, so. So if we're done with Bill and Cody's portion, are we moving on to Byron's?
Yes.
Yeah. Good ea, good evening. Thank, thank you, Chair and Directors. Good to, good to see you all again. I'll try to keep this brief as usual here to let us get to the meat of the agenda, but please feel free to ask questions or slow me down as appropriate. So first up, just some updates on staffing. I think I've got the, the pleasure of this item this week. We've got good news on the power services team that we will be bringing in two employees, one next week and one the week after. So I look forward to introducing them to you at next month's meeting. Both of these new employees come from, what, yeah, come with extensive CCA and ISO and utility experience. So both procurement and risk management experience. So I think we're really excited to be growing our team with, with experience, again, experience employees and expertise throughout kind of to hit the ground running. So very excited. I'm sure you're all excited to hear from others, not just me, as well in future meetings, but we are excited to be growing the team pretty significantly here in the next couple of weeks. Next up on the staffing side, we have, I believe, one position within external affairs and one on the finance team as well. And all of these positions, of course, are funded within the budget, the fiscal 21, 22 budget that I think Eric will be presenting and reviewing with you later. But we'll just note that all of these are, are contemplated and filling as expected. And you, I'll move on to power resources here in a minute, but are there any questions regarding staffing?
You're, you're specifically talking about staffing within your team, not generally staffing overall?
So the first, first two people coming in are on my team. The, the rest are external affairs and finance on, on other teams. So that's overall staffing as well. No, no major updates at this point, except what's coming down.
Perfect.
So on the, the power resources side, I, I think I, we just wanted, you know, ta, take a minute and note, we've all, we've done this already, but, you know, coming out of the last couple, couple months of, of meetings here, you, you've all been involved in review and approval of our long-term power groups agreements, but those three that we've reviewed with you have been approved. They've all been signed. So I think really it's an exciting moment. I don't want to belabor the point or, or delay us here, but I think just, just to, to reflect on the fact that we have three long-term power groups agreements signed. One of them is in San Diego County, you know, all three of them in, in Southern California. And had to have them signed and now, you know, working with developers under development within just a few months of serving load, I think really is a notable achievement for, for a CCA. You know, so want to, want to make sure that we all just to, to note that, to, to report out to you that they are now signing. But also just to reflect that, you know, that we're excited about this. And I think it reflects just kind of the, the success of the organization and the strength of the organization that we have here to be able to, to, to get those, you know, but again, again, I want to tip my cap to all of you who are involved and a lot of it predates me, right? And, and the RFO that was kicked off last year. But again, just want to note that those were executed and I think it's really an exciting moment to, to note. More to come for sure. We have one more as well that we'll probably be reviewing with you here before long. Again, the last one coming out of that, that RFO. But, but we're pretty excited and again, just to, to be able to deliver on, on promises and to continue the mission.
It's definitely an exciting time and thank you for, for those, signing those agreements, working out those deals. Any information on, on discussions with, with SDGNE about purchasing power from them?
Yes, that, so that's also here in, in the update where we continue to work with SDGNE. We've been working with them since, since I joined, I think before I joined. So it's been a number of months now. We feel like we're getting close to an agreement on for renewable power. At least that's kind of first step here. We're, we're, you know, in discussion about transitioning potentially to resource adequacy after we get this deal wrapped. So my, I don't want to jinx anything. My hope is that we'll be able to report out next month that we have successfully signed the, the agreement. And again, that, that's been reviewed previously, I, I think with you all right on time that I, that I joined the EEI master agreement and the confirm. So there's a good amount of of work that's gone on since then to really get it in a, in a good place. Again, and it, it's been a, a, a healthy negotiation. I'll, I'll say, you know, I think we, in a lot of ways, we're aligned with EGENE, right? There, there's a lot of power they procured on behalf of their customers that are now ours and we're, you know, in a lot of ways, we see eye to eye that we really want to transfer that renewable power, you know, to, to our customers and do so in a kind of in, in different, kind of cost, cost equitable and indifferent approach. So there's no impacts on either bundle customers or on ours. So there, it's been really, you know, a matter of, of working towards that. And then there's also some regulatory updates and developments recently allocation of resources that we've been trying to accommodate as well, just to make sure it all, it, it all flows through for the, the term of the agreement. So sorry, sorry if that's more, more, more than you are. Chair Moscow, but yeah, those, those discussions continue and we hope to have something for you all here soon.
No, that, that's good. Anything else in your report?
Um, that is main, I think that's mainly it. I think the, you know, contracting goes on, continues for a short-term renewables, short-term carbon-free and, and short-term resource adequacy as well. And I will note as, as well, from a, a risk management perspective and it's from a may, maybe it's a short follow-up to the, the Western community energy question as well. We are fully hedged. We have, you know, our system energy and market risk positions closed out for the rest of this year. So again, we've got a, the energy risk management policy, we've been hedging, you know, toward that strategy. We've been buying over time and consider ourselves fully hedged now for the summer. So we don't expect any, any kind of those similar concerns that, that Western faced. So just wanted to, to, to note that. And I'm happy to review, review further as well.
All right, perfect. Excellent. All right. Well, let's move on to the next kind of subtopic here, which is back office operations and that's Lucas, right?
Right. Good evening, directors. So for this month, I'm actually happy to report that Calpine has deployed a backend data warehouse. And essentially what this allows for us to do is to query in my usage, customer information, billing, SQLMD data, et cetera, on demand to aid obviously in analyzing our load, revenue and op action trends. So we're pretty excited about that. And the staff, all of our staff should, should actually have access to it by this week. And again, that, that, that will help us out a whole lot in, in, in doing the analysis that we, that we like to do without necessarily asking for Calpine to, to provide that data set. As far as the opt actions for, for this, for this reporting cycle, based on what we've seen as of June 14th. I'm actually happy to report that, you know, our participation rate is still at 98.43% from a load perspective, which represents an opted out load of about 54.56 gigawatt hours out of the 3,464 gigawatt hours that we're expecting to serve for phase one and phase two. And then in terms of counts of how many accounts have opted out so far, we're 928 out of the 72,000 plus eligible for phase one and two, which represents about a participation rate of 98.72%. In terms of ops, we're actually, we're happy to, to, to note that, you know, a few of the member cities have opted up this week, but obviously that's not reflected in the stats as the stats are from the previous week. But we're currently at a participation rate of about 0.56% and our power 100. And then last but not least, in terms of up downs pertinent to the city of Encinitas, I'm actually happy to report that we only have received one up down so far. And with that, I will pause to see if there are any questions or comments.
Well, that's good, good information. I like that you report to on, on not only like the, the opt out in terms of percentage of customers, but then also what that represents in terms of power. We, I actually hadn't been looking at it from that perspective, but, but that's really the, the important perspective, right? But, so, so that's great. The opt out rate is, is awesome. What are the, the communities that opted up? Obviously, Encinitas was opted up.
Correct, but we do have a few municipal accounts for city of La Mesa and city of Chula Vista that have since opted up this week. So definitely great, great news there.
That's really good news. And then we also have the airport that just opted in and opted up.
That is also true.
Good, good. Any questions or comments for Lucas, who's just been delivering some awesome news for us? All right, I don't see any hands raised. If you don't have anything else, Lucas, then we will move on to the next item.
Thank you, Chair Moscow.
All right. So item number four is update on regulatory and legislative affairs, and that is Laura Fernandez.
Thank you, Chair Moscow. Yeah, I'll try and keep it short today since I know that we had a long meeting, last meeting, and I know that the wine is already open and ready for happy hour. So I promised regulatory rapid fire. Here we go. Um, let's go to the next slide, please. The first update is on SB 612, the best news. SB 612 made it out of the Senate floor. As a reminder, this is the only legislation that we've taken a support position on today, or any position for that matter. This is the legislation that addresses all three pieces of the PCIA, including RPS, RA and greenhouse gas-free energy. So got off the Senate floor with the vote of 33 to six. And now it is in the assembly. It will be heard in the Assembly Committee on Utilities and Energy on June 30th. Support letters were due today at noon and I'm pleased to report that in addition to all five of our member cities submitting a support letter, the airport also submitted a letter of support for SB 612. So they're a great customer. Maybe, you know, we don't have favorites, but maybe today they're our favorite.
Fly into San Diego if you don't support this now.
Uh, it's going to be a big lift to get SB 612 through the assembly, but I'm really happy the bill's made it this far and, you know, things are continuing to go on. You know, we're continuing to try and seek additional support. So if you have ideas, I'd love to hear them, but hopefully I will have more good news on SB 612 at the next board meeting. Any questions for now?
Why, why do you say that, that it's gonna, is it, is it partially because of some of the LA delegation? I mean, I, I would have thought that with, with an LA person kind of offering that, that, that it would have. And he's got some potency in, in the LA area. So you would have thought that there would be some kind of fragmenting of that, of that vote around DWP or something.
Yeah, there, you know, the concern is that there's labor has pretty much, they've said outright that they're going to turn up their opposition in the assembly. They're very strong in the assembly and they are opposed to this bill. That being said, Portantino, he has met with them previously, is continuing to meet with them. So we're trying to figure out, you know, how we can make this bill more amenable so that hopefully we can get some of that opposition removed before the hearing next week.
All right. Um, I know Encinitas sent two or three letters, but please let us know anything we can do. This will make our life better, make it better for our ratepayers. And, and certainly the, the, one of the issues that we'll be talking about later is, is the county of San Diego. And I think that, that you know, if, if they do come with us in the future, this would make it that much easier.
And they did also submit a letter of support. So we have lots of letters, lots of allies and continuing to seek more. Any other questions on SB 612? Okay, next slide, please. AB 1139. So last month, I think this item probably took the most time. This is the net energy metering bill that's authored by Lorena Gonzalez. Last month, the community advisory committee recommended that SDCP take an opposed position on AB 1139. Staff also supported the CAC's recommendation, but during public comment, we learned that the bill had been amended that day on the assembly floor. And in light of these amendments, which were not yet available in print, the board opted to not take a position during the last meeting and requested that I come back with additional information on the bill today. I can report with confidence today, the bill did not receive enough votes to make it out of the assembly. So it did not get to the Senate, it's been moved to the inactive file and it is dead for this year. Any questions?
I know, I just, thanks for that. And I just have a, a comment. I, I want to just thank all, I know the community members, a lot of community members and organizations that weighed in on that. I really appreciated that. I think, I, I think I comment on this, but I, I think others as well. I was really concerned about the divisive rhetoric that was used to sort of divide what should be a, an inclusive and very diverse climate movement that includes residential homeowners as well as organizations and labor unions, et cetera. But I would hope, I'm speaking to the folks that proposed this bill, that this doesn't happen again, that we look for ways to bring people together. But we don't use solar energy as a way of dividing people and more importantly, sort of like marginalizing them or, or, or just calling them out on, you know, how much money they make or what class they're in or something. I, I just, it's very concerned about that. And we, we need to, we have a lot of issues to deal with in terms of climate. We got this drought, we got heatwaves. We're, we're all doing the right thing. So anyway, my hope is that we could avoid these types of issues in the future and, and and I'm not saying we just, that this doesn't happen for the climate movement because, you know, we got a lot, a lot at stake and this kind of stuff just, just sets us back.
I agree. Anything else on AB 1139 or legislative matters before we move on? Okay, next slide, please. So I have an update on transportation electrification. Last week, we requested party status in a rulemaking at the CPUC that is addressing transportation electrification. In particular, there is an energy division staff proposal that's known as the draft transportation electrification framework, which tees up a lot of questions, but one of the questions is whether CCA should be able to access funds that are collected from all ratepayers for transportation electrification programs. We were granted party status this week on Tuesday, and so we will be able to file comments and engage in the proceeding. Our goal will be to ensure that any of the policy discussions that are going on that could impact potential funding for future programs and incentives are favorable to CCA so that we are able to access funding in the way that the IOUs are in order to offer these types of programs to our customers. Any questions on that? Okay, next slide, please. This was one that was a big time suck last week, but today the CPUC ordered an additional 11,500 megawatts of procurement by all load serving entities for the years 2023 to 2026. The original decision had, this is a huge decision, so I'm only going to cover part of it, but the original decision based the assigned procurement on 2021 load share. But in our written comments as well as jointly with SDGNE during ex parte meetings, we requested that the commission adjust the allocation between SDCP and SDGNE to address planned load migration in 2022. So basically they were looking at how many customers are you serving this year to determine what our procurement allocation should be for 2023, 2026, which we didn't think made sense. SDGNE agreed. It was nice. We were able to work with them and go in and have these meetings. So we also requested the CPUC allow a process for adjusting capacity allocations after this. So, um, we also requested the CPUC allow a process for adjusting capacity allocations after this decision came out. And the CPUC did change the final decision in order to correct the allocation numbers, but also they gave us the advice letter process that we advocated for in our comments. And during the ex parte meeting, so we can ensure that the numbers are right and based on the most uh recent available information, which will be coming out in the hyper demand forecast. Uh, next week. Any questions on that? Okay, next slide, please. And last but certainly not least, I want to provide an update on the net energy metering rulemaking at the CPUC. It's commonly known as NEM. Three point O since the first tariffs were known as NEM one point O and two point O. So there was a cost effectiveness analysis that came out at the end of May. Uh, I, along with the programs team, are reviewing that as well as the opening testimony that was filed, uh. Forget everything was last week, the weeks all blurred together now, but it was earlier this month, the opening testimony came out. So we are taking a close look at the pro- the proposals that were put forward in this proceeding, and we are coordinating with joint CCAs in this proceeding. Um, who are talking to other parties and seeing, you know, where, whether there might be settlement talks going on, it's it's unclear at this point. But um, if, you know, SDG, uh, SDCP may want to have a seat at the table and know what parties are discussing in terms of. Potentially figuring out where there's commonality among the different proposals in this proceeding. Um. So I'm not, I'm not sure at this point where that is going to go, but certainly we are looking at all the proposals as well as the cost effectiveness analysis. I put the next steps in the proceeding up there. The first one is rebuttal testimony, which we didn't file testimony. I don't expect we'll file rebuttal testimony. But that is in the middle of next month, and there's evidentiary hearings, and then opening briefs we filed in August. And I am thinking at this point that the joint CCAs will probably file opening briefs and closing briefs, so that's, um, that's kind of our next procedural step. We're just kind of digesting all the facts as they're coming in right now. And, oh, and then I do, uh, are there any questions? But there's another part to this, but any questions yet?
When you say that you expect that um joint briefs will be filed by CalCCA, um, so is there, are 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 you, are you or Cody? Who represents us at CalCCA on the board up there? Is it, is it you?
So there, CalCCA has, so there's a couple of pieces to this. So CalCCA actually doesn't participate in programs proceedings. So they actually do not participate in like net energy metering or transportation electrification. They let groups of CCAs who are interested in those particular areas engage in those proceedings. CalCCA more leads the IRP, RA engagement, those types of proceedings. But then your other question about who is representing us, so at the CalCCA, CalCCA has lots of committees, it'd be a full-time job just to sit in all of their committees. But we do have um Cody and Bill who participate at the board level, and then I sit on the regulatory as well as the legislative committee. Um, and then there's also procurement policy committee that Byron and I both participate on, and there's also a compliance committee, so lots of, I'll bore you if I go through the whole list.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, no, you don't have to go through the whole thing. I was just, I guess, my, my point was just, um, that, that, just trying to ascertain. Um, you know, is it through the CalCCA apparatus that 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 the the CCAs are coming together? And, you know, is there some?
Not for this particular proceeding.
All right, but so is there some um strong belief that there's gonna be a joint um brief filed by um a group of CCAs? And are we gonna be one of them? Or is that gonna be something that you're gonna bring to us?
Um, it, I, I mean, you know, as you can see, briefs wouldn't be filed until August. And so, you know, if you'd like me to come back and get further direction on whether we should file briefs, I can certainly do that. Right now, you know, we are just coordinating with the other CCAs in the proceeding to see if, you know, we might be aligned with them. Um, and so I'm, you know, I'm taking all input, but if you'd like me to come back at a future board meeting with specific direction or to receive a recommendation to. Uh, join with other CCAs and filing opening briefs, and I can certainly do that.
And if I could chime in on one thing, we do have, from a procedural standpoint, we do have a regulatory legislative delegation. So sometimes of authority, because sometimes these items move quicker than the board meetings can line up with, so. Um, anytime you all have input on items, we're happy to hear it, and I think we have your general consensus in mind and and move forward. Um, per the timeline that is either regulatory legislatively driven, um, but like, we're happy to come back if you all direct that.
All right, um, but but you guys can, you guys can act on your own as well, based on some of the values that we've already outlined. All right.
And and I think the other part of your question is, do do we think there's a consortium of the CCAs who will coalesce on this issue? Uh, absent uh an active part by CalCCA, and I think the answer to that, Laura, is yes, right? That there's already a group, we're actually catching up, I think, a little bit with the group that's already there, trying to make sure we align with them and whatnot, so there is. That is anticipated at least.
Yeah, there is. So there is a, um, you know, outside of the CalCCA process, I meet with a group of other, you know, people who are in my position. At other CCAs on a biweekly basis to review the different proposals and then proceeding, talk about next steps. We share information about which parties we've talked to. Um, and, you know, we, we kind of, that that's how, that's how we're coordinating at this point. And so, you know, the the briefs are a ways out, but um, that would probably be our next procedural step, but there's no firm decisions that have been made there yet. Any other questions? And then, uh, I also wanted to, I'm looking at, to see if Eddie Price is um available. But I believe that the CAC also discussed this proceeding at their most recent meeting. And so I was going to ask Eddie to present the uh perspective uh of the CAC on this item.
Thank you, Laura. Um, greetings, everyone. Can I get a wave or a hello or something? Nod your head or something?
Hey, Eddie. Hi, Chair Price. Thank you, thank you for joining us and and letting us know uh what the 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 Community Advisory Committee uh is thinking on this matter.
Well, you know, we we'd like to um um support Laura in her aggressiveness on this issue. Because we believe it's extremely important to the benefit of the community. A lot of the um economics. Um, that will feed community programming will be based in this NEM program, right? And so the economics that are associated with it, we really need to understand what it means to not only the CCA, but the CCA programs that we're gonna. Um, um, come through later on. So I would, I would, if I had the power. I would um ask Laura to be as aggressive as possible on this issue with the other CCAs and the uh legislation in state of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. So any, any, uh, Laura, do you have any other uh information, or is that the end of your report?
That's the end of my report.
All right, any, um, any, uh, remember comments, questions, um, any, and and feel free to chime in on that last point as well.
Chair Moscow, we have another comment.
All right, let's uh.
Tara Hammond. You can go ahead, Tara.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Chair Moscow and board members. Um, I just wanted to point out how the net metering. Uh, proposals from the investor-owned utilities have fees on their side of the bill. And those are things that won't be able to be avoided by San Diego Community Power or any Community Choice Energy Program. So I know today we aren't discussing the NEM rates, but this would have an impact on rooftop solar. And uh all San Diego Community Power solar customers and the city and state's ability to reach one hundred percent clean energy goals. With local distributed generation and would also impact potential programs that have been discussed through this program, uh, through San Diego Community Power. So, um, this is something that we're all watching and engaging with very closely. And um, just echoing Eddie's request to get as involved as possible, obviously, as since SDCP is a party to the proceeding. There are certain rules around that, but we're hoping uh to see involvement and to advocate to protect rooftop solar. And also really push to expand equitable access. So thank you all for your time, and thank you, uh, Director DeDina for your remarks earlier on AB eleven thirty nine.
All right, perfect. Bring it back to the board, and thank you, Tara, for those comments. Any, um, any further comments on this item? All right, so let's, um, oh, we have, uh, Director Montgomery Step.
Thank you, Chair Moscow. Just, I I just wanted to get an understanding briefly about, um, if we are to get involved. Um, I, my understanding is that we would be filing an opening brief, or we could file an opening brief, or we could. Um, be a party to or combine with other CCAs to do so. Like, what would be the process? Uh, kind of, what is the ask? And then that will help me with like the procedure.
I think right now, what we're, what we're doing is we're collaborating with other CCAs, um, and and uh slowly kind of. Uh, working with them to see whether or not there can be a a joint opening brief that can be filed. Um, seeing that the opening briefs aren't due to August twenty seventh, um, what we could do is have Laura bring this back to us. Um, at our next meeting in July, um, to uh to update us on on how those conversations are going with the other CCAs. And and about the proposals that are out there, uh, and so if we want to either um go jointly with the other CCAs. Or um, or do something ourselves, uh, in a more aggressive posture, we can. Um, I I suppose that's kind of what I'm seeing. Um, what do you think, Laura?
Yeah, and I I'll just add that, so in terms of whether we're a party, we are currently a party to this proceeding. We have filed comments in this proceeding previously. Um, and in terms of filing a brief, yeah, right now, we're just in preliminary discussions, and yes, I've taken the direction that San Diego Community Power should support rooftop solar. You know, these proposals are complex and multifaceted, but I really interpret that as, you know, high fixed costs certainly would not support rooftop solar. That would be penalizing rooftop solar, but um, I think, I think that we do have some alignment with the other joint CCAs based on where, what I am currently hearing. Um, in terms of updates, you know, as a, as a party to the proceeding, there are certain things I can share, things that are publicly filed. But there are rules around um settlement negotiations if we do decide to participate in those, that the uh, there's rules about what can and cannot be shared. Um, and, but I just want to be clear that, uh, real, I, when you hear the word settlement discussions, it really just means like there's multi. There's a bunch of different proposals in the proceeding right now that have different payback periods, um, and different fixed costs, things like that. And so there, it's kind of like more of a meeting of the minds where everyone put out their proposals back in March, and now they're being looked at through this cost effectiveness lens. And now, you know, there, the commission, it's something that they have on their schedule, actually, that these, if there are any settlement talks, there may or may not be. Those would have to be completed on the same day of um opening briefs. Um, but participation in those would be confident, uh, the the subject matter, at least of what is being discussed with other parties would be confidential. But uh, just, just to be clear, it's not like backroom dealings, it's more, you know, trying to figure out, you know, what what parties are willing to negotiate on. And if there can be some kind of a middle ground amongst the parties that have these, you know, very different proposals right now. And there may, and there may not be, and there may not be anything that we would support or want to sign on to. But um, my recommendation would be that we at least preliminary, preliminarily participate and see what the uh, what the other parties are currently thinking.
Okay, okay, yeah, and and also just, we're talking about timing and taking a break maybe uh as a board. And so I was just thinking about all of that, and if we wanted to be involved at a uh higher level or uh do a di- uh, do things in addition to what we're already doing. Then we would have to figure that out, but thank you, thank you very much.
That's true, um, that's true. Um, Cody or Bill, when are we thinking about the break? Are we? Have we polled the cities to see, are we implementing that this year?
We're hoping to implement it this year. I think we were thinking in terms of the July or August or September, well, September, no later than September.
Well, September wouldn't be good. I mean, it would be either July or August, because I would, I would imagine the cities are, are on vacation either July or August. Um.
Yeah, I don't think you're coordinated in terms of all doing the same one, but I think within that two or three months, all of you, I think, are are doing it. I don't know, Cody, do you have any?
What are the majority of cities doing?
I I haven't polled all of them yet. I know you all are split on on August and July, so I think it'd be up to you all to tell us if there's a preference. Otherwise, we can poll and with the majority, we we pick that month, but it's only July or August. I don't think we're considering September.
Right, I mean, E- Encinitas is July. Um, I mean, it's, I guess, whatever we say is gonna have consequences. Because next, if if it's July, then next month we don't meet. Um, when, when is San Diego? Is San Diego August?
San Diego is August, yeah.
What is, uh, Steve, what is, uh, Chula Vista?
July, but either, either can work for us, so.
All right, what about IB?
July.
July. La Mesa?
Neither. We're, we're open July and August, so I'm good.
Look at you guys.
We take December off if if you want to remember that.
All right, so we have, what do we have? Three, uh, three, one, one, three, one, one? So we have three for July and one for August. Um. It sounds like July may be the most uh, most relevant. Um, are there other mitigating reasons why we'd want to go with August?
Are you asking me, Joe, what month do I want to take off?
Oh, look at you, changing.
Now I'll say July. Now I'll say July.
All right, so that means that we have four that say that that July is is the best month.
Okay. We can.
All right, so, um, so, so I guess that means that July would be our month, which is next month. Um, so let's now reconnect with the conversation we just had. Um, Cody and and um Laura, do you have enough information? Uh, uh, to, uh, if we're not meeting in July, based on, you know, the questions from Director Montgomery Step. And some of the conversations so far, I mean, do you feel like you have enough um guidance um for what's gonna be happening coming up? With um, with uh, with this, with this proceeding?
I do. Yeah.
All right, all right, perfect. All right, if there are no mu- more questions or comments on this item, then we will receive and file um this report. And we'll move on to item number five, which is a review and provide direction on staff, uh, to staff on update of analysis of county membership. And um, is this to you, Bill?
Yeah, I I'll start, actually, uh, uh, Cody and I and PEA are gonna actually cover five and six. The elements of five and six uh that play on one another, uh, so we're actually, we may be jumping back and forth a little bit. But uh, uh, you all recall that, uh, the process that the the county has suggested for for them. Is uh not to seek uh, uh, membership directly initially, but to ask us for information. Uh, us and uh the other CCA in the area, uh, and then they would take a look at those responses from us. And then determine what their course of action is going to be, uh, which means that if they decided they would like to request membership. Then we, then you as a board at that point in time would be considering that for membership. So right now, it's not really a consideration for them to join, but to make sure they're comfortable with our responses. And have all the information that they need uh to make a decision uh from their side. However, uh, in thinking of that, we think as a staff, we were contemplating that there may be others, and there's rumors of others. Who may want to request membership, so there may be some bigger issues here, rather than looking at the, uh, this potential request in isolation. There are maybe some other policies and things like that that we ought to, as a strategy of a, a, a product, uh, a way that we ought to look at subsequent. Um, issues and make sure that all of our policies and procedures will accommodate those as well as best we can. So that we're not doing a one-off here, but we're using this as an opportunity to to go beyond. So, uh, we did, uh, submit quite a lot of information to them, and we reported that to you and showed that to you last time. Uh, I would call that maybe eighty or ninety percent of of the issues. Uh, the one outstanding issue was sort of the the potential economic impact, uh, of positive or negative on. On SDCP from their membership, and so we immediately, when they made the request a month ago, started our consultants PEA. In doing the so-called assessment to take a look at the economics, and then we would feed that back to the, you would analyze it. That would become a part of the package for them to review as well. Uh, and so what we are doing tonight is really bringing closure to the, what we think that will be closure to the information phase to them. Uh, by having PEA present to you the assessment, uh, economic assessment, and then there are some ancillary issues like voting. And 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 uh, some of those things that we will bring into play as well in terms of both the, this current situation and the future. So at the moment, I'd like to uh turn it over to a PEA. I think John, uh, Alessi is gonna make the presentation. Uh, and you all then can can see, uh, again, the 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 economic impacts of of what the membership might mean. And then we can talk about teeing up a couple of the other issues, and then the more can discuss really all, I think, all those that. I think all those at once, if you let us get through items five and six, because they do play off of each other and they're interacting. So if that's all right, I would call on, uh, next, uh, have John come in and do the presentation on, uh, the assessment.
Thanks, Bill. This is, uh, this is actually Kirby.
Kirby, okay, sorry, Kirby. I thought.
No problem. Hopefully this doesn't come as a disappointment, disappointment.
Looked a lot like Kirby. I was confused.
Well, good, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I hope you're all doing well. I think we've got a very brief slide deck to run through this afternoon. That highlights some of the findings related to the impact assessment that was performed related to. Uh, the prospective addition of, of county accounts to your, uh, member composition. And kind of just getting things started, we'll highlight some of the key, um, kind of. Details and statistics related to, uh, county customers. And you can see here, there's a, a breakout by the typical rate designations that apply within. Uh, the SD G and E service territory and the electric utility service territory, uh, service industry, generally speaking. You can see here, if the county were to come on board, we'd be looking at enrolling up to about a hundred and eighty seven thousand accounts. That use about one point eight, uh, million megawatt hours a year. And, uh, and in terms of average use, you can see that also is calculated here. And, and that's, uh, kind of an interesting fact because on average, uh, you know, the kind of county uses, uh, energy. A bit more intensively with the residential customer classification in particular, using energy about sixty percent, uh, more intensively than they do. Amongst your, your current, uh, member communities. In addition to the load that there, that would be served as part of this perspective expansion, there would also be an increase in your peak demand. Um, I think you all generally understand what that means, the point at which you use energy most intensively, which is generally going to occur. During the summer season and, and that would increase by about four hundred and thirty megawatts, uh, relative to the current peak. Which is, I believe, close to about eleven hundred, uh, megawatts. And so we can go ahead and, uh, and also just kind of direct your attention briefly to these bar charts on the right side of the slide. And you can see the, kind of the current levels, uh, in terms of accounts being served by, um, SD CP. As well as energy consumption there in the lower right-hand corner. So the left bar chart being SD CP's current customer composition, and then the right bar chart being, uh, the county. So this is kind of, uh, gives you a sense of scale. And in overall, if the county load would be added to yours, that would be about a thirty percent increase. In expected annual retail sales, so not, not inconsequential. Go ahead and, uh, let's go to the next slide, please. All right. So. In completing the study, there were a variety of assumptions that needed to be made, and I think that's, uh, typical with any study like this. And in particular, the start date or the enrollment date of potential, um, customer additions is, is critical. To kind of framing the study. We looked initially at, at the earliest possible enrollment date, which would be January of twenty twenty-three. And that date is really established based on CPUC defined guidelines for CCA. Enrollments and, uh, you may understand, but just as a reminder. If, uh, you know, as a kind of proceeding, any CCA launch or expansion, there needs to be an implementation plan. Or an amended implementation plan submitted to Energy Division at the PUC. And that implementation plan needs to detail out all of the kind of consequences and benefits related to CCA formation. And in order to, um, add the county to your customer base. And enroll them as customers eventually. You would need to file an amended implementation plan by the end of the current calendar year in order to enroll those accounts. In twenty twenty-three. If for some reason that process slipped and you didn't get the implementation plan in until next year. The earliest timeframe in which you could enroll those customers would move forward to twenty twenty-four. So there is this waiting period. And so the first pass we took looked at January twenty twenty-three as the potential timeframe in which the county customers would be enrolled. That kind of, uh, resulted in some suboptimal economic outcomes. So we advanced that or moved, advanced that timing a bit forward. Um, and looked at April twenty twenty-three instead. And that proved to be a, a optimized enrollment strategy for purposes of completing this study. And it, and it kind of eliminated some of the deficits that were projected in the. Um, in the fiscal year in which enrollments would occur and improved, um, things kind of on net over a three-year period. That was looked at related to the expansion assessment. Terms of participation rates, um, you know, we, we assumed about a ten percent opt-out. So this is ninety percent participation, kind of, uh, similar to what's been observed across CCA organizations, generally speaking. We looked at, uh, two years worth of SD G and E data for these prospective accounts. We looked at both twenty nineteen and twenty twenty and decided that twenty nineteen, uh, better represented reality. Given, given some of the peculiarities associated with the pandemic and its effect on energy use, so that, that became the basis for the. Uh, for the forecasted usage that we included in the assessment. On terms of revenues and the projections related, uh, thereto, we assume that SD CP's current rates would continue into the future. Um, kind of, there would be no changes up or down during the study period. And then in terms of the costs, um, of course, the incremental power costs associated to serve county loads. Customer billing costs, um, and then SD G and E service fees were also folded in. Uh, to make sure that we had an accurate representation of, of, of both sides of the, the ledger, so to speak. So those were the, the key assumptions that were made. And if we go on to the next slide. This gives you a snapshot of the first three fiscal years in, in which, uh, county. Service would be offered. So it's, it's kind of a partial year. There in fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three, so we'd have customers enrolled in April. And then only a very abbreviated period of time in that fiscal year that they'd be served. And then in fiscal years ending twenty-four and twenty-five, those would be kind of full years. Where, where the county load would be, uh, present amongst your customer base. And you can see here that, that, you know, kind of the gist of the economic impacts in that first period of time, that first fiscal year. It's really no change at all, um, zero, zero change in net margin. And then that becomes increasingly positive over the next two fiscal years. So on net, you'd be adding on a projected basis about sixteen, seventeen million dollars to your net position. Uh, in that three years, the three-year study period, and then you can kind of see how that all relates to the. Number of sales that would be, uh, assumed as part of that transition and that, those are kind of post-opt out. Sales there. So if you look at this bottom row relative to the summary of, of county loads. That were, uh, presented two slides ago, there's going to be a little bit of difference and the reason is, is the, is related to the opt-outs. And then if we go on to the, I believe it's the next and, and final slide, there's just some generalized, uh, conclusions. That were made. Um, so overall, based on the last slide, I think you saw there that it, it's an overall positive fiscal impact. Related to this prospective expansion. One thing to keep in mind with any assessment like this, particularly in a commodity-driven industry like the electric power sector. There's, there's always volatility, uh, in, in pricing. And as much as we'd like to be able to predict the future with accuracy, that's impossible to do. So, uh, the prices that we assumed are based on current market conditions, which could go up or down. Uh, to the extent that they, they go down, the margins would be expected to improve to the extent the power costs go up. Uh, those, those margins would become smaller or potentially turn negative under a, um, kind of a worst-case scenario. Another thing to keep in mind that I think is really important is that you would have a lot more power. Not just power, generally speaking, but renewable energy and then also resource adequacy capacity. That would need to be purchased in relation to this expansion. And one of the things that, that seems, um, kind of clear and obvious to us as far as a, a, a strategy for dealing with that expansion. Would be coordinating with SD Genie as soon as possible, much like we did, um, before you commence service in the first place. To, to inquire about potential resource acquisitions, uh, notably RA and, and RPS resources. Um, of course Byron mentioned earlier in the meeting that those discussions remain ongoing, uh, but are, but are very productive. Related to RPS supply, and we would expect if, uh, the county were to join your membership, that we would need to reengage SD Genie on that front. And also, uh, talk about resource adequacy capacity and potential surpluses that they'd be willing to sell to us. Absent a willingness to do that, uh, this, this would be challenging. And I think you, you would possibly want to reconsider the timeline for bringing on county loads to make sure that you can, you can get. Um, adequate contracting completed for these resources in advance of, of those customers coming online. And that's, that's really the, the study in a nutshell. Uh, hopefully you all received the, um, the more lengthy. Memo that accompanied, uh, the staff report. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And I know John Delessi is also on, and, uh, he can certainly take the tough questions.
Chair Moscow, Matt with CAC has his hand raised.
Let's, uh, let's go to public comment.
Good evening again. Matthew Clemente campaign, uh, dialing in to support further discussion and forward momentum for the county to join SD CP this year. As the item report makes clear, the county would be a net benefit for STCP. Adding to its economies of scale, which is now a critical factor in the success of CC programs in California. We are eager to see the county join this year and hope the board of directors will take a proactive role. And explain the many benefits to S, uh, SD CP can provide the county to the board of supervisors. We also want to note the report makes clear how important SD Genie's cooperation will be in not only transitioning the county to SD CP. But also in meeting necessary local resource adequacy requirements. So we're hoping SD Genie will work in contract with SD CP. Um, I know that's been a difficulty in the past. So thank you to Director Baker and SD CP staff who have been working with the county to answer questions. And we look forward to partnering with you on this important effort.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Um, any, um, comments or questions for, uh, from the board, for staff, um, Director Baber?
So Kirby, I think I know the answer because I was talking to staff earlier about it, but I want to ask you on the record for the public to hear. The resource adequacy issue, uh, that's a, that's an issue, um, independent of, of us. In the sense that if the county created their own, uh, uh, CCA or they join. Um, another CCA, they've got them. That's a standard that has to be met, right? It's, that's not unique to us, correct?
Absolutely right. Yeah. Any load serving entity in the state of California. Um, is going to be, you know, CCAs and the investor on utilities alike, they're all going to be subject to the state's. Uh, regulations regarding reserve capacity. So that statement's correct.
And although I know, um, Senate Bill six twelve could alleviate this and our fine negotiations with SD Genie could really alleviate this. But if it doesn't, there's only so much resource adequacy to go around. And if the county comes in with us, I assume they're better off because number one, we already have the infrastructure built to handle it. And two, uh, the longer, uh, if you're the eighteenth city into it in San Diego, I doubt there's going to be full rest. It's going to be harder to get resource adequacy. So isn't it in the county's best interest for, for this one issue to come in as early as possible?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. And, um, I'll, I'll make a few remarks and then, um, it'd be great if John, if he has anything to add. Um, for him to chime in, but, but I think it's, it's kind of a universal problem, whether or not. Uh, the county goes at this alone or comes and, and joins SD CP's organization. Uh, the, the reason being is because, you know, that the resource adequacy that's out there. Um, to the extent that it, it isn't already under contract with you in some small form, this is held by SD G and E. So, uh, you know, they're the, they're the organization that's had to fulfill the San Diego area's resource adequacy requirements. Up until you came about. And so, um, whether it's, it's. SD CP taking on the county and having an increased requirement or the county going on it on its own and taking on the obligation itself. Um, you know, that, that obligation kind of remains the same. The challenges remain the same. But I would agree kind of with something that you said, that you already have the infrastructure in place in terms of the, the staffing. And the, um, experience that's gained through, you know, going out and acquiring power supplies and dealing with SD G and E. So theoretically, um, it should be a more efficient process to have you undertake that than have them kind of try to recreate it.
Thank you.
For the presentation, I just kind of have a question. I don't know if it impacts this or not, but as far as the renewable energy targets that we set forth. Um, previously in our, um. In our integrated resource plan, would adding, uh, an additional entity impact at all as far as our long-term targets? Or would it, um, how would, how would we go about evaluating that?
Yeah, I. Absolutely. So to the extent that you add to your retail sales base, which would absolutely occur following. Uh, the prospective addition of county loads, your renewable energy mandates would also increase. Um, that's kind of a uniform expectation regardless of whether or not. You take on the county load, they go at it on their own, or they stay with SD Genie and SD Genie needs to buy that, that renewable energy. So, so there's uniformity there. Um, you know, I, so, so I, yes, I, I, I think there, you know, if they came with you. Then you'd be out in the market trying to buy renewable energy. Um, you've already been pretty successful in doing that on your own, having secured the three long-term agreements. Of course you need more, um, and that's, that's in the works. But, uh, but yeah, I think one of the things, you know, kind of relating renewable energy and resource adequacy capacity. And your impact on those spaces, I think you've already done something really, really positive in executing. This San Diego-based, uh, renewable deal that's going to marginally increase. The amount of local capacity available in the San Diego area. And I think you have an opportunity to continue to do that. If, if that's an area that you'd like to focus on. So, um, you know, in, in, in a, in a small part, but a part that I see growing. Uh, significantly over time, you're already kind of helping solve the problem.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a, that's an important point too, Kirby. Um, you know, that, that just, um, I mean, the, the, the resource constrained area that we already. Kind of exist in and, and us changing, being a game changer and increasing the capacity in this area. And, you know, and just like you guys, I mean, I believe in this. Um, I believe that, that, you know, in trying to move us as quickly as possible. To one hundred percent renewable energy. And I think we can do it, um, for the county, um, a lot better than they could do it by themselves. And so I think that, that, um, that it, it makes sense, uh, to join us. And I think this economic study shows that it makes sense. Uh, and so, um, yeah. Any other comments or questions? Vice Chair Padia?
Just briefly, I would just appreciate, uh, Kirby's work and going in before the analysis. I mean, the two key things that were on my radar were, you know, our ability to assess the potential, um. The range of anticipated supply costs at a given point in time, given the timing of the onboarding. And then also frankly, how we would look at resource adequacy in terms of our ability to control the level of coordination with SD G and E at the right time as well. And it seems to me that the staff has looked at that pretty adequately. And, um, those were, those are the key areas that, uh, the things we had little to no influence over that scare the hell out of me. And, um, I think that they've, uh, uh, now, you know, analyzed that to, to a level of, of comfort. So for me, I think, I think the analysis pretty much, uh, speaks for itself in terms of the, the net benefit here. Overall, um, and when, when evaluating the risks and the benefits, and I think that, that, uh, scale certainly plays a role here. And, and so I, I just think that, you know, it's, it was done well. It's appreciated. I'm happy to support, um, taking next steps and, and moving forward.
Right. Um, so if there are no other comments, I think that what we're staff, um, correct me if I'm wrong. What you're asking us to do is, um, support the, um, the release of this analysis to the county.
That's correct.
All right. Um, do we need a motion for that? Uh, or is it just a consensus that we want?
I don't think so. I think that was a part of the plan all along. We just wanted to make sure you, you all reviewed it first. And again, you're not taking a vote on their acceptance, uh, you know, as a member tonight anyway. This is really informing you of the, the work that we've done to give to them. So I don't think you need to do that. And then we have a couple of other, uh. And then we have a couple of other items to report on as well, so.
Let me just, Ryan, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Do we, Ryan, do we need to vote to release this analysis or is it just send it on?
I believe you can give informal direction to staff to to release the analysis and send it on. If you'd like to vote on it formally, you can, but that's not necessary.
All right, it sounds like we have consensus to to forward this analysis on. Do you see, you want to move on to item number six?
Yeah. Item six, in in dealing with the issues surrounding the item we just discussed with the county, there were two other issues that actually surfaced that needed to be reviewed by you all as a matter of policy going forward. And the first is, as we add additional parties, do there need to be different accommodations for calculating weighted votes? You know, at the beginning, as you know, ninety nine percent of the time, it'll be one person, one vote. But there are circumstances under which weighted votes could be cast and adding a new member or more than one new member can can will impact that voting. And so we have some some discussion and some recommendations on what might be desirable to do going forward in that arena. And then the other one is sort of more mundane, I guess, and that is the fact that we did have to to pay for the study, the assessment study that was done. And we have some suggestions on how to treat that, whether whether a member joins or not. And it's also based on size, so that we try to be try to try to be fair. So we 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 need to report those to to you as well. And that's that's item six, and Cody's going to take you through that.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, so I think Bill covered the two recommendations here. We've had essentially a few discussions now on this, especially at the last meeting where we worked through some of these issues as we're thinking about how to bring on the county who who's come forward first. And so the two parts tonight are approve draft policy. I don't know, I'm getting some feedback on a few as well. Folks want to go unmute, that'd be that might be helpful. And then the second one is providing direction to staff to return to the board with some minor modifications to the JPA agreement. Hear some feedback we've heard and any other discussion I'll have. So next slide, please. So just really quick background again, I'm rehashing this from from the work we've done already in last month. We talked a bit about this and just, you know, we looked at other CCAs to see what they're doing. Others have expanded, they have fairly limited policies. It's essentially an assessment of if there's mission alignment and then, you know, financially, does it look feasible for us? And then it's a really a board decision. And so the the draft policy that we're presenting today really provides that guidance for us. And the purpose to have this policy in place, even though it is pretty high level, is as we have other cities asking us same questions, we want to just be able to share with them at least some structure so that they can make their own assessment. You know, we have the city of National City and maybe a few others are doing feasibility studies or asking questions. And we think this will be helpful for them. So the next item, next slide, please. So there's three components to the policy that we put forward. And one is looking at costs. So there's a cost to do this assessment, which we've spoken about last time. Currently, we think it's not to exceed $30,000. It's coming in so far, pretty far less than that. So we talked about not asking a new member agency to to pay those fees. We asked them to commit to paying them, but not actually being required to pay them should they move forward with joining us. And then we did list in the policy a couple of options or opportunities for waivers. So of course, if the board would just like to offer a waiver, or if it's a smaller city, and again, as well as if they move forward with joining us. On timeline, we're looking at a series of steps. You know, we start working backwards from the January first deadline that the state imposes in order to file an implementation plan and allow you to serve that new agency's customers one year later. And so working backwards from that, we've laid out a series of steps as a guiding timeline for both us to follow and also any city that's exploring this to give them some parameters. And then the third item, as Bill mentioned briefly, is talking about voting. And this is where last meeting, Director Baber, maybe a few others, I can't recall, brought up the idea of when we wrote the JPA, we talked about contemplating five members. And now that we're contemplating more, do it, make some minor changes and modifications to the JPA agreement to contemplate that should weighted voting be called. And just remind all of you that you've never actually called for a weighted vote. So it's definitely a theoretical exercise, but good to have documented. And and that gives you an opportunity to make any other minor modifications that you would like to make to that. Next slide, please. And that's it. So that that's the the brief overview, the policy, the draft policy is attached in your board packet and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
And and those decisions can be made next time, right? We're not asking for a vote on that tonight, right?
That's correct. And in fact, any amendment to the JPA requires notice to our member cities, so we can actually share that with them. And conveniently, we're going dark now in July, I believe. So we have more than 30 days to work on this issue and come back to you in August.
The when we wrote the original JPA and we contemplated five members, it works for six if we add the county, but we may have a seventh and we may have an eighth. We might have them by the end of the year. And so I think we we need to go back and look and see do some of those policies still make sense if if we expand to beyond five, six members. And that's what I wanted to look at with Cody and Bill and and the the attorney.
Chair Moscow, Matt with CAC has his memory.
All right, let's go to public comment.
Good evening again, directors. Mathew Vasilakis, CAC dialing in to support the item, looking forward to it further fleshed out version. We obviously have the county at the table, but we also want to highlight other communities such as Escondido, San Marcos and Vista, who are considering their CCE options right now after completing their own joint feasibility study. We are also glad that SD CP is continuing to center equity in its expansion processes and are pleased to see that the that community such as National City and Lemon Grove and others may have their fees waived under the current proposal. Thank you to staff for putting this proposal together, and we look forward to seeing SD CP grow as we all move together towards a 100% clean energy future.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, nobody's mentioned in San Marcos. I think we've been helping San Marcos with their analysis and going to be talking about this soon as a city council. So perhaps there another possibility. So let's bring it back to the the board if there's no other public comment. And if there, let's, are there any questions or comments? Bill, so you had your comment was more not about the the member policy, but the the changes to the JPA agreement.
So it's about the member policy, but this is one of the things we have to do in the JPA. Not everything we do regarding member policy is in the JPA. This is one. My question, I guess, for Bill or Cody, how did you come up with 75,000? Does that put, I think San Marcos and Escondido would be bigger than 75, National City would be below it, Oceanside would be bigger. I don't know where that puts Vista. How did you come up with that that number?
Yeah, we looked at populations in the county and kind of tried to pick us. We thought, you know, a relatively smaller city would be below. I think San Marcos is an example is is about 61,000. And, excuse me?
San Marcos and Vista are are over 100.
Yeah, they're, yeah, yeah, they're they're big.
But individually, I don't think they were quite that big. That it's it's a number that can be changed. We were just trying to parameters in place. And the board, of course, still has a waiver ability to waive for anybody. So we just wanted to.
Yeah, Joe, I didn't know if seventy, I didn't know if if we put 75,000 on, who who was that under? Who that belong? Think National City is under, but everybody else we mentioned is probably over it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't know where it belongs. I mean, I'm not suggesting that it belongs up near 100,000 because San Marcos or Vista. Or at that point, I think that clearly San Marcos and Vista and National City can afford to pay for the for the study. I'm not sure.
National City, National City is below it.
Would you like, of course, before next time, to do that survey of?
Yeah. I'm not saying the number's wrong. I just don't know what, I don't know, there's only 18 cities in in San Diego, five are already in. So I just don't know where it fits with the other 13.
Yeah, it, you know, it is a bit arbitrary. I mean, you can use whatever criteria you you want and you know, how you qualify, big and small. In fact, we went through a couple of iterations ourselves, Cody. We started and countered and backed and and so there's nothing magical to it, other than we thought the bigger city could probably afford it. The smaller ones probably could not. And and if if you find that that becomes a burden to those, you can always, you can waive it for anyone. So financial burden.
Why not? Why instead of, because it, because I'm not sure that extrapolating based on population is going to to do it. I mean, you could have a city that that, you know, a city, a Carlsbad could be very likely is smaller than Oceanside. But clearly, one, Carlsbad can afford more than Oceanside can. So I'm not sure that it's always going going to be the case. I wonder if you just basically say you're going to charge everybody and then have a waiver policy. And then what is the waiver policy? What are the the factors that you would look at in terms of 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 putting in place or recommending a waiver?
And we can do that.
The way they have it written now, the new member agency has a population of 75,000 or less, or the board waives the costs. That that's probably okay. You know, it gives us the waiver choice. It said, it said 75, Joe, as a target, so the public who reads this will have an understanding. And you're right. And also, there might be smaller cities that have big loads because they have a more of industrial base. So I'm okay with the way they wrote it. I just didn't know why 75 was the number, but I'm like, I'm done with that.
So are you saying that you're fine with how how it's presented? And then what was your other comment about wanting to to in terms of the JPA agreement, wanting to meet with people to?
Well, I I've been working on with Bill and Cody. I'd like to have one more from the board. That's kind of an ad hoc subcommittee to talk, join me in the conversation with them. If you want to join me or Steve or or Serge or Monica.
I mean, if if, I mean,
Yeah, if you want to make an ad hoc subcommittee and you can be on it with me, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree to that in terms of looking at the JPA agreement and any kind of modifications that need to be made to facilitate that. Unless anybody else wants to do it. Any other thoughts, comments?
I'm comfortable with that, Mr. Chair. I think it's pretty straightforward. I'm happy to move approval of it and the creation, you know, authorize you to join the ad hoc with Bill.
Perfect. All right, so we'll have we'll have an ad hoc committee to look at the modifications to the JPA agreement. And we'll report back, I guess, in August on any changes.
Okay, if Steve made the motion, I will second it.
Great, we have them by Vice Chair Padilla and a second by Director Baber. Any questions or comments on that motion? If there aren't any, then we'll move to voting. I don't see anybody else.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Board member DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, yes.
Board member Montgomery Step, how do you vote? Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Hi.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, let's move to item number seven, review and approve of fiscal year 21 financial audit preparation. And Eric Washington is going to take this item.
Good afternoon, Chair and Directors. I'm coming before the board today to recommend for approval and to seek for guidance for engagement of our auditor for our fiscal year end reporting cycle for fiscal year 21. Next slide, please. By way of background, Pacenti and Brinkler was the auditor that completed our fiscal year 21 audit reports. So we're seeking to reengage them under a new contract at under the terms as set forth before you for a total of three years, but it would be broken into one year renewable renewable op with one year with two one year renewable options with the 60 day notice period, which would allow us to pull out of that engagement and seek other auditors if we chose to do so. And in addition to that, not to exceed cost for engaging that auditor would be 63,000, which would basically account for $21,000 per year for each of the successive years. So with that, I'll take any questions.
So do we have a policy yet on on how long we keep auditors on on that we contract with them before we switch off or will you bring a policy to us in the future?
I'd be happy to prepare a policy for you, Chair. Currently, I don't believe we have one. I haven't seen one. Perhaps Cody or Bill can confirm that, but I do not believe that there's a policy in place.
I guess this will be kind of the precedent anyways, because if if this goes to fruition, then we would have these folks on board for four years. I I think it's, what is it, industry three to five or something like that?
I believe it's, I believe it's three to five, and this would actually have them completing our audits for no longer than a three year period. But with the terms being proposed, it would be a one year term with two, one year renewable terms with a 60 day notice period if we chose after the end of the first year, we could actually pull out of the pull out of the service agreement and seek another auditor if we chose to do so. But that would not exceed a three year period with one auditor.
Right, excellent. Thank you, Eric. Any questions for for Eric? Any questions or comments? Kimberly, do we have any members of the public that want to say anything? All right, well, let's bring this back. Do we have a motion on this item? Or any questions?
Did you know some of?
All right, motion by Director DeDina, do we have a second?
I'll second, Chair.
All right, we have a second by Director Montgomery Step. And we will now vote.
Board member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, yes.
Board member Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, Eric, I think you have the rest of these items. Item number eight, review and approve fiscal year 22 budget, and this is Eric again.
Yes, thanks again, Chair Moscow, Director. Again, I'm presenting before you now our proposed budget for review and approval for fiscal year 2022. I'd like to like to start by indicating that SD CP continues to phase in our customers. And we're continuing to grow comparative to the fiscal year 2021 amended budget. And I'll have a slide to present to you later in the slide deck shows the the actual growth and relative revenue and the area of expenses to support that growth. Overall, we're are, we're we're pretty lean and fiscally responsible organization. Our our budget is believed to be conservative from a standpoint of revenue, which includes our opt out rates and also a conservative 1% uncollectible rate from our bill payers compared to half percent. That's that's pretty typical for other CCAs. Next slide, please. So this is just an overall, an overall presentation of the budget. As I indicated, it's a pretty, pretty lean budget with regard to not a lot of line items that we're budgeting for. So this is a believed to be a pretty accurate reflection of our of our budget for fiscal year 2022, potentially going forward with some year over year changes in the various line items. Next slide, please. And as noted here in the bar chart, you'll notice on the left is the budget, what we budgeted in terms of operating revenue for fiscal year 2022 compared to fiscal year 2021. And again, that's attributed to the phasing in of customers. So partially through fiscal year 2022, we'll have phase, phase one to and partial phase three customers rolled into our revenue stream. Next slide, please. So I'd like to spend a little time here on the expenses. After some research of a sample of other CCA, our budget is pretty reflective of what they've reported historically in terms of expense categories with the cost of energy being the most significant. with the cost of energy being the most significant expense item accounting for roughly ninety to ninety five percent of expenses for other CCAs. Here, as you can see, based on the pie chart, our cost of energy represents eighty nine percent of our gross revenues with the remaining revenues with, I'm sorry, with the remaining expenses accounting for an aggregate of less than five percent of gross gross revenues. So the personnel costs, basically, we're anticipating over fiscal year twenty twenty two, the addition of ten staff members. That I'm sorry, the addition of twelve staff members over the ten we currently have. And that also includes rolling out an internship program with an opportunity to maybe look at expanding that program from contingency funds with which we've conservatively included in that expense item as well. In addition to that, we are rolling out our benefits package, including retirement, which is another agenda item later in the presentation, as well as healthcare. The next expense item group I'd like to highlight, just a couple of items are in the professional services and consultants category, which represents one point six percent of our total expenses relative to gross revenues. So we continue to engage and retain legal counsel for regulatory and compliance matters as well as power contract negotiations. In addition to just general counsel, for example, BBK serves as our general counsel. Tothall serves as our compliance attorney, just by way of example, and to name a few of the consultants that we engage. Next, I'd like to highlight the technical support. Technical support, you heard from one of our technical technical support consultants tonight, Pacific Energy Advisors that assist us in rate setting, load analyses, scheduling. They provide information that allows us to put together performers, some of which have been included in this budget by way of revenue based on some of the performer performer data that they've provided to us as consultant. We also engage program consultants that will serve in providing us with feedback on programs preferred by some of the customers that we're 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 serving as well as assists with complex applications for funding, as well as planning for programs that will consider energy efficiency, renewable and resilient opportunities for local development opportunities, as well as additional funding sources. Another professional services consultant expense I'd like to highlight are with SDGNE and Calpine. SDGNE, that expense line item is anticipated growth over the fiscal year reporting cycle as we continue to ramp ramp up and roll in rate payers, the billing fees covers SDGNE's costs associated with the meter reading, data processing, as well as bill coordination. Data management, again, that's provided, support provided by Calpines, provides billing data validation as well as billing coordination with SDGNE. They also support callback services and technical support in terms of billing and responding to those types of inquiries. Our marketing and research line item, I'm sorry, marketing and outreach line item provides communication consulting from our PR consultant civilian that helps us to make sure that our messaging meets our mission and reflective of our constituency or the communities that we're serving. Another portion of that would be notices and printing. There's requirements that we have to notice customers and as we bring in additional rate payers, that number is pretty significant. I believe those notices are also printed in various languages as well. Marketing and outreach also includes budgeting for member funding for the development of local energy related programs as well as electrification and decarbonization and climate control action plan. So that would support that as as well. General and administrative expenses, one significant expense there is our affiliation with CalCCA. One of the public comments tonight mentioned the importance of being affiliated with an organization such as CalCCA. So that is included in general administration as well as rental expenses. Previous remarks made tonight are that we are seeking space so that we can host our staff and operate from. So that's included in general and administrative expenses. Next slide, please. So the next slide. So based on this budget, our net position would land us at about one point seven million compared to the seven point eight million dollar deficit reported based on the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget. Again, reflective of the ramp up, the phasing in of customers and ultimately reaching a point of fiscal sustainability, which will also allow us to do a couple of different things. For example, funding a reserve account, being able to leverage that to fund some various programs as well as debt reduction. So that's that's the budget that we're bringing forth to the board for review and approval and guidance. And I'll stop here to entertain questions or comments.
Chair Moscow, we have public comments.
All right. Thank you, Eric, for that presentation. That was an excellent presentation. I do hope that perhaps even when we start our planning session, we can talk about, you know, kind of precedent for the future of how we how we how we have our strategic planning session that will inform the budget and how we have budget workshops. I know that like with the city of Encinitas, we have, starting in around February, we start, you know, planning and we start kind of having budget workshops. I know with the County Water Authority, which I've been on the Board of Directors for, you know, we do this over a six month period time, although that's a one point seven billion dollar budget. I do think that that I would like to talk about, you know, kind of how we want to do it in the future as well. And I I perhaps perhaps that's more of kind of a planning session agenda item. But I I do think that in the future, it's important to talk about how we're going to basically roll this out, planning and then workshops and and then exposing the budget as much as possible, exposing all the line items as much as possible and then having this before us. But thank you for the presentation. Excellent presentation. So let's go. Kimberly, you say there's members of the public that want to speak in this item. Let's introduce that.
Matt, it's CAC. You can go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. Good evening again. My last comment is where Matthew Waslakas Climate Action Campaign dialing in to support the funding for a local development business plan. We're excited to hear that those dollars are in the plan, a key component for creating truly local equitable clean energy system within the member cities borders, which is critical for both building climate resiliency and ensuring direct economic investment in our communities. So we look forward to next steps on developing and planning for that plan and the quarters ahead. Thank you.
We listened, Matt. You requested it and it's in there.
Thank you.
That's Eddie. Eddie Price?
Chair Price.
Hello again. I I was looking at the budget and I was kind of having conversations with some of the members of the CCA. I would like to request five to ten thousand dollar line budget for the Community Advisory Committee. I don't exactly know what for just yet, but I think we would be able to do some excellent work. I was in Encinitas earlier this earlier this week, actually, or later last week. And I I found a community of concern, Chair Moscow. There was an area I was concerned about in Encinitas. And it's that little museum you got over there by the water. There used to be an elementary school and some museum of some sort. Pardon me?
Pacific View.
I don't know. It's it. I I don't know what it was. That's how concerned I was about it. I I couldn't even tell what the name was. It just said museum and an old sign. But I think it would help the the Community Advisory Committee to know that we have some funding so that we can get creative with what we do from our position. And so I would like to see five to ten thousand dollars per year that the Community Advisory Committee could actually work with and utilize. And if we don't spend it all this year, it rolls into next year. I'm done now. Y'all can close your mouths. I know you're in shock right now, but.
Yeah, you're you're, if I were king, if I were king for a day, you're worth a lot more than that, Chair Price. Thank you for the comments.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Let's bring it back to the board. I I see that Director Baber has his hand up.
What Eddie said reminded me to bring up a a couple of things. What now that we're opening up, I would, I think in our budget, we need to put in a line item, or maybe it's already in there. I'm just presenting it to the board that if our members want to go to a seminar or they want to go to a training or they want to go to a CCA meeting that we have some sort of budget for that. Let's call it the continuing education process. I know our cities will pay for that, but I would argue that it's better to have SDCP pay for that. I would also include in that continuing education line item, if same thing for our community advisory committee. And then for the members of the board, when we first started this in the JPA, we put a line item that said board members could be paid, but we didn't. I didn't want to bring this up too early. But now that we're in our second year, I think that we should be paid at least what the same what you're paid at Sandag for us to be dealing with these multimillion to billion dollars issues, you know, it's not that much to be paid like the way we're at Sandag. So I'd ask the board and I'd ask the staff to come back with a port to see. I don't even know how the other CCAs are paid per meeting, but I know Water Authority, MTS, Sandag, our JPA on our sewers all have some tiny stipend for the members, and I think we should have one too.
Thank you, Director Baber. Bill Carnahan, I see your hand up. Did you want to respond to Director Baber?
No, I'm just going to say I actually Eric can do it better than I probably, but I believe there's funding in this year's but budget for all of those items, all three that were mentioned, the 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 board and the CAC.
Yeah. So why don't, yeah, when we come back in August, just, you know, have the staff give us a report on on that, you know?
Okay, I believe it's in there, though.
The the, I think the Bill, the Bill Carnahan, I think the educational component is critically important. Obviously, this is really thick stuff. And as we kind of get back to in person meetings, when we first started the SDCP, we had gone up to the Cal, CalCCA had a conference, their annual conference and and Redondo Beach there and, you know, phenomenal conference and really learned a lot. And I think a lot of my colleagues that that went with us learned a lot too. And so I want to make sure that we're encouraging the board members to kind of seek further educational opportunities. You know, encouraging the Community Advisory Committee to do the same and also staff as well. Hopefully, when we bring this back, that there's some sort of, you know, allocation for further education and conference conferences that that can help with kind of education of staff members too. And just kind of that networking that happens. And so I think that that's inclusive of what Director Baber was saying is just to make sure that we're all of those, that that's addressed in there. And then what were you were saying in terms of the Community Advisory Committee? I mean, how how much have we allocated? Have we allocated a certain amount for the for the responsibilities? Not only, you know, everything that they're doing, is there a a line item that is associated with their role?
Chair Moscow, this is, this is Eric, if I may. All of those items are actually included in the budget. I'll break them out and provide the board with a report, but they're included in the GNA line item, other GNA. So in that includes staff training, development, board training and development, as well as allocation of funding for the various committees, including the CAC committee. So they are actually in there. So we'll break them out and make them separate line items and provide a report back to the board.
So so just not to be.
I believe specifically, we, the item that was included for the CAC was the the amount that that Eddie suggested tonight. We we actually talked to him to get the get the amount from him, so we did include that amount.
I but and and this is kind of an example of like, I think that when we when we sit down in the next fiscal year and we start to think about the plan and we think about the budget, I really do think that this type of kind of level of of detail and transparency is important in the future. And and we're making sure that, you know, through the the workshops and stuff like that, that we're talking about this and we're drilling down in ways that that, you know, you know, perhaps Eddie or somebody else doesn't even need to ask because it's gonna it's gonna be right there. All right. Any other questions, comments on this item? All right. If not, excellent job, Eric.
We need a motion to approve the budget.
We we need a motion.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I second. Did you know second?
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget that was just presented by Eric Washington. Let's vote.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, yes.
Board Member Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, let's move on to the next item, which is item number nine, review and approve financial reserves policy. And this is Eric again.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Chair Moscow. So I'm presenting to the board tonight approval for a financial reserve policy. Next slide, please. The purpose of this policy is to allow sending community power to maintain reserves as described in this policy to meet our strategic objectives, secure favorable terms from our vendors by having a reserve established to secure standalone investment grade credit rating ultimately, and to provide funds to cover for unanticipated and unexpected expenditures and not be disrupted too significantly from those things. So how do we get there? So the policy proposes that we be allowed to allocate up to fifteen percent of our gross revenue toward our reserve on an annual basis, ultimately with the target, according to the initial policy, would be to achieve a ninety days of operating cash on hand. This policy was informed by a review of policies by other CCAs, for example, PCE as well as MCE to understand what their policies were. In addition to what the key credit rating agencies look toward, look to for CCAs in terms of a setting an investment grade rating. For example, they look to a hundred and eighty days, essentially six months of days of operating cash on hand to assess or influence those ratings. So I'm presenting this policy before the board, before the board for approval. That will give us the flexibility and allow us the opportunity to start establishing reserves. With that, I will entertain any comments or questions.
Little question for for Eric. Eric, do you mind if I call you Eric or do you want to call you Mr. Washington or is Eric fine?
Eric's fine.
All right. Any questions for Eric?
I'm willing to move it if there's no questions.
I have, I have just one question, Eric. So so this seems like bare minimum in terms of reserve policy. Are are you going to bring us back other policies? For instance, with County Water Authority, one of the things that has become really useful is that we have a rate stabilization fund. As we bring on other entities, perhaps even the county and and with RA issues, a rate stabilization fund would be would be would be very helpful. Are there other reserve funds that we would be looking at in the future?
Boy, in in the future, that's a great question, Chair Moscow. In the future, yes, we would ultimately recommend or develop a rate stabilization policy, probably after we get the reserve. recommend or develop a rate stabilization policy, probably after we get the reserve policy established. And as we continue to ramp up and the revenue stream grows and our net position expands over time, we'd have the capital or the the net position to support those types of programs. In addition to that, to the point with to the point respective to the budget, that would also be another policy that would be developed, as well as other policies as we roll forward and identify what those needs are and which policies will be necessary to support those.
And so the fifteen percent, that's just temporary. And then so when do we, when do you imagine us reaching the ninety ninety days?
So based based on a preliminary calculation of of our net position going forward, based on the performer, we would hit ninety days approximately around fiscal year twenty twenty four. And so going back to the budget, our net position, based on our fiscal year twenty twenty two, we're at just over five and a half percent. So we really wouldn't have enough to support a an up to a fifteen percent contribution into that fund. So as we ramp up, that will definitely change over time as our net position improves on a go forward basis.
Fine. All right, Director Baber, did you want to state your emotion again?
I would move the item.
We have a motion by Director Baber. Do we have a second? We have a second by by Vice Chair Padilla. Let's vote.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member DeDina, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
Excellent. All right, let's move on to our last item, a very important item. Item number ten, review and adopt resolution for a retirement plan. And Eric, this is your item.
Yes, thanks again, Chairman Moscow. We're bringing before the board approval and guidance to adopt our retirement plan. Essentially, we've, I believe Laura's presented updates on our progress toward the retirement plan. We are now at the point of executing the necessary documents to actually implement that retirement plan. So we are looking to execute three documents to get the plan underway for three parties. One, the plan advisor with PWA Financial, the plan administrator, Benefits Resource Incorporated, and the account manager and information administrator with Empower. So we're seeking board approval and guidance that will allow us to execute those documents so that we're able to implement the fund so that we can roll in our existing staff into that retirement plan, as well as be positioned to provide that benefit to future employees or candidates that would add to our team. As mentioned previously, we're looking to add twelve new positions over the balance of the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget cycle. So with that, I will open for questions or comments. And I would also invite Laura and Cody to chime in at any point as well.
Any questions on the the consultant agreement with PWA or the the four fifty seven B or four O one A?
Are we doing all these? Wait, wait. Are we doing all these just under one resolution? We have to we have to do motions and approve vote on each of the four items or five items?
I was planning on doing one motion, but
Okay, that's why I was going to make sure. Okay.
That is that okay?
It is with me. We had do that at the City of Imperial Beach. So I just want to make sure I'm always clear. That's all.
All right. All right. Ryan, chime in if it's not okay. Any questions?
More thought too. Thanks, Eric, for that and for the invitation. I don't know if you mentioned this, or if even if you did, I'd like to emphasize that we are looking at a package and options and funds that are environmentally and socially conscious and looking to reduce or eliminate fossil fuels from our portfolio. So it's one of the considerations that we started with, and actually Laura initiated that with some ideas from, I think, Sebastian and others. So it's a staff group effort, and I thought that was something you all would like to hear about.
Thank you, Cody. I had not mentioned that. Thanks for the reminder.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that. It's in the packet, but but it it needs to be said. It needs to be said as much as possible, especially since it's in in line with our values. Any any questions or comments for for Eric on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion, since there's no public comment either.
So move.
All right, we have a motion by Director DeDina.
Second.
And a second by Vice Chair Padilla. Let's vote.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member DeDina, how do you vote?
Do you need yes?
Board Member Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, and we are at the end of our agenda, guys, and we don't. We have a summer break, that means. It's it's a surprise to me. I didn't know we were going to have a summer break. So any besides come back with your Hawaiian shirts on in August, any other director comments?
Yeah, but wait, we make lots of jokes, you know, but this is I I'm really pleased that the City of Imperial Beach is part of this this organization and this new power company essentially. And, you know, we've got record drought, heat waves on the way. The climate crisis is more serious than ever, and I'm really grateful that the cities and partners in this San Diego community power are taking this issue seriously and taking steps to address it. So I want to thank all of you and then the staff, as well as our CAC members and new customers for making this possible. So thanks.
Well said. Well said. Yeah, I am so proud of of our team, the whole team that's coming together and and everything that we've done. Some of the stories that are coming out, I mean, this just shows how how much added value we really are, you know, kind of adding to this whole area. So it's just it's it's exciting to be a part of. All right, any other director comments? All right, reports by our general counsel or our our management, which means, I guess, our CEO, any any reports?
I wouldn't dare.
Ryan, do you have anything?
Wish everybody a great, great summer up until August, so.
All right, guys, have a nice July off and see you guys in August.
Bye bye. See you in August.
Bye.